New year, if we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Castellano.
Here.
Councilmember Moulton is absent. Councilmember Fernandez.
Present.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche. Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
And Mayor Bergel.
Here. And if you'd care to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just a little housekeeping item. We will be pulling item fourteen under reports. Because we don't have a full council, we'll be looking at that next meeting. And at this time, I would like to call up the family of Renee Deloche. We are going to swear her in in person.
Sorry, Mayor, but that's it's item I four and item I five.
There you go.
I believe.
I four and I five. That looks like fourteen. There you go. Thank you. You got it? Okay, so raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I Renee Contreras Deloche.
I Renee Contreras Deloche.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will.
That I will bear truth and faith.
That I will bear truth and faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution.
And allegiance to the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Charter of the City of Eureka.
And the Charter of the City of Eureka.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
In the capacity of councilmember of the City of Eureka.
In the capacity of councilmember of the City of Eureka.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Hello? I could be in it. Very good. Thank you. All right, and with that, we will move to our mayor's announcements.
Mayor Bergel.
Yes?
Just for the record, I want to.
Report out of closed session?
Yes, just say that there was nothing to report out at closed session.
Thank you. And in our mayor's announcements, we have the National Mentoring Month proclamation. Is there someone here to accept that? Jennifer? No? Okay. All right, well, go ahead and read that. Councilmember Fernandez?
Whereas this year, Big Brothers Big Sisters of the North Coast, CASA of Humboldt, and Boys and Girls Club of the Redwoods celebrate the 138 combined years of service provided to the youth in Humboldt County. Together, it is recognized that the future of Humboldt County rests on the.
Your mic's not on.
Start over, okay. Sorry. Whereas this year's Big Brothers Big Sisters of the North Coast, CASA of Humboldt, and the Boys and Girls Club of the Redwoods celebrate the 138 combined years of service provided to the youth in Humboldt County. Together, it is recognized that the future of Humboldt County rests on the success of its youth. And whereas a mentor is a caring, consistent presence who devotes time to help a young person develop personal strength and achieve their potential through a structured and trusting relationship. Quality mentoring encourages positive choices, promotes self-esteem, supports academic achievement, and introduces young people to new ideas. And whereas research shows that young people matched with a caring adult through a quality mentoring program are 55% more likely to be enrolled in college, 81% more likely to participate, to report participating regularly in extracurricular activities and sports, 78% more likely to volunteer, and twice as likely to say that they held a leadership position than those who did not have a mentor. And whereas youth development experts agree that mentoring is critical to the social, emotional, and cognitive development of youth, helping them navigate the path to adulthood more successfully. And whereas our community has a number of community volunteers, teachers, advocates, and many others who support the mentoring movement and work selflessly to improve our children's odds for success. Now, therefore, Mayor Kim Bergel, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim January 2023 as National Mentoring Month. And thanks to all of our local heroes who participate in the quality mentoring programs to equip our youth with the tools to lead healthily and produce lives, the city council also calls on residents to help close the gap between the availability of mentors and the number of children facing challenging circumstances who would love to spend time with a big brother, big sister, CASA advocate, or Boys and Girls Club of the Redwoods mentor.
Thank you. Moving forward, we're going to have the mayor's report, actually. And this is the time of year where, years ago, it was 2017, council passed a resolution affirming human rights. And so I'm going to read that, just to set an intention for for our year as a region and as a community. So, resolution of the city council affirming human rights, inclusiveness, environmental sustainability, affordable healthcare, and religious freedom. Whereas in light of the current climate in our country and the negativity and hate that is being fostered, isn't that crazy? It was written in 2017 and we still have that happening. Whereas Eureka will not turn our back on people from other countries who bring such richness richness to our city, we will continue to build bridges and not walls. And whereas we will never back down on human rights, whether it's healthcare, the workplace, or any other area threatened by others who treats people as objects to be demeaned or objects to be assaulted. And just as important, we will ensure our youth grow up with role models who show them they can be or do anything. And whereas that there will be no conversion therapy, no withdrawal of rights in Eureka, and to all the LGBTQIA people in our city and all over the country who feel scared, bullied, or alone, you matter. You are loved and seen. Whereas that we still believe in the nation's founding principles of religious freedom, we do not ban people for their faith, and the only lists we keep are on invitations to come and pray together. And whereas the Eureka Police Department is committed to building trust between police and communities of color so all citizens feel safe in their neighborhoods. And whereas our residents are committed to environmental sustainability and that climate change is real, and that clean power, zero waste, and other measures to protect future generations are a priority. And whereas affordable, universal healthcare should be a continuing priority for the State of California and the United States. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Eureka condemns all hate crimes and hate speech. We will fight discrimination and recklessness in all its forms. We place the highest value on human rights. Further resolve this, that this resolution should be forwarded to Senators Feinstein, Harris, and Representative Huffman to demonstrate our city's commitment to fairness and inclusion. And I think it's just really important to set an intention for the year and how we want to behave in this meeting and just in life in general. And I just also wanted to just do a quick mayor's report on something that I'm working on. As your mayor, I will be starting up a mental health initiative. As we know, mental health is a huge issue in our region, in our city, in our state, in our country, pretty much everywhere. And COVID has really exacerbated that. And though we do see that on our streets a lot, mental health doesn't discriminate. It doesn't care if you live on the street or if you live up in some really fancy house on the hill. Mental health impacts all of us. And so we will be moving forward with some different items to not only educate people, but find ways to work with folks who are seriously having problems. So I'm really looking forward. Our first town hall should be in the beginning of February. Everybody will be welcome. As I said, it'll be educational, so we'd love to see you there. And I think that's all I have. So with that, we'll get on to city business. In a moment here. Let's see, where am I? Okay, public comment. Oh, no, public hearings, right? No, public comment first. Okay. So this is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take any action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. So that will be thirty minutes, or, excuse me. Time allotment for public comment on non-agenda items, a maximum of 30 minutes shall be allotted to receiving public comments at the initial public meeting period. And we'll finish it off at the end if there's more than 30 minutes here today. So is there anybody here who would like to speak in public comment?
Of course there is. Good evening, and welcome to the two new council members. And it's funny that you, well, actually, I wanted to begin by commenting that, once again, I was disappointed to see no electric scooters or bicycles in the racks outside City Hall. So how'd you get here tonight? Scooter? No scooter, huh? Yeah, so I guess I guess the rest of us shouldn't worry about doing it, since you guys obviously aren't committed to it. So anyways, I mean, I notice that every time. I mean, we get all these big things about let's get out of our cars and let's, you know, let's destroy the parking lots and let's get electrify everything. And then I noticed that everybody drives their diesel four-bys in their cars down here when some of them only lived a few blocks away. And those bike racks sit out there just empty as can be. So, you know, I've always, my dad always told me that, you know, if you want to lead somebody, lead by example. And you guys aren't really doing much of a job of it. Beyond that, it's funny that you mentioned this mental health initiative. At this moment right now, I have an old family friend who is like family. She was my sister's best friend when we were young, and she was my my best friend's girlfriend for a while. She was like a family member to us. She had a good life up to a certain point when she got off the tracks and ended up on the streets. Been a good while. We lost track of her for quite some time. My sister gave me a call a week before Thanksgiving and told me that she was in a motel and fixing to be kicked back out on the street again. This woman is 62 years old. She has two bad hips as a result of a injury where a horse fell on her and she walks with crutches. She has an income, but she can't find any housing in Eureka, low-income housing. You guys, not you two, but the rest of you have all gone on and on about it for years, about your concern for homelessness and mental illness and drug addiction and disabled people and everything. And you've spent, you've overseen the expenditure of millions of dollars towards that end, towards supposedly helping these people. And yet this woman has been on my couch for six weeks right now. We've been calling every day. She's working with several of your agencies. And then finally, Friday, I reached out to our mayor and asked for personal assistance, which apparently we got, because we got a call from Uplift Eureka today. And guess what they were able to offer? A referral to a rapacious private developer who's willing to rent her a room for $900 to $1,000 a month. This is a low-income homeless person. And you guys think that all those millions of dollars you spent to produce that has had any positive effect? You guys need to rethink what you're doing. This is disgusting.
Thank you, Stephen. Is there anyone else in the audience that would care to speak? Is there anyone on Zoom?
A Christensen.
Okay, there we go. Hello, welcome to our newer city council members. I just wanted to comment today to ask the city council to encourage or direct Eureka Police Department to do some crosswalk enforcement in town. When I'm trying to cross the street in my reflective tram and bright colors and flashing lights, I still have a lot of problem with cars not stopping while I'm in the crosswalk. And I think our local drivers need some education on what a crosswalk is and what they're supposed to do, because otherwise, why should I bother using them? I'd like to invite the city to, you know, create a PSA, run a commercial, again, explaining to drivers what crosswalks are, what their legal duties are, you know, what makes a crosswalk a crosswalk, not necessarily lines on the street. Regarding housing, I don't see how people can complain that they can't find housing for their friends and family members when those people are also opposing the housing that you're trying to build. That's that's what happens, you know, that's the result. And I'd like to invite the city council to try transit. Councilmember Fernandez, you know, tried transit. I took him around on a couple of the bus routes to try them out. I'd like to extend that to other council members and other city staff. I'm willing to do it if you have time. So that's all I got.
Thank you.
For now.
Thank you.
C Griffith.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to flag that I was attempting to just watch this meeting through the link that's on your website, the Granicus or whatever. And it just keeps saying that the link is not working, and it's probably a little late to fix it for this evening's meeting. I just wanted to let you know that there's a problem with that. And I will jump on with Althea and say if any of you all are interested in going on some bus rides, I'd be happy to go as well. I'm a big fan of the Eureka Transit system. And it could be really fun to just go out and test all those things out. And as city council members, then you can have a really good idea of how our transit works and doesn't work and what could be better. So, thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. And they are working on the meeting currently. See anybody else? Okay. Seeing no one else, we're going to close the public comment and open the public hearing. Principal Planner Kenyon. And this is on E1 Lumber Hills Southwood Unit Number Six Development Agreement.
Good evening, council. The project before you is the development agreement for the Lumber Hills subdivision unit number six. This development agreement will affect a subdivision previously approved in 2007 near the city's southern boundary. A closer look shows the location of the project east of the existing Lumber Hills subdivision. Application SD 0303 was conditionally approved in 2007 to subdivide 19 relatively flat hilltop acres into 56 new lots ranging in size from 6,500 to 49,000 square feet, with the remainder parcel retaining 8.5 acres. Planning Commission approved the subdivision in January of 2007, subject to 40 conditions of approval and 19 sequoia mitigation measures, which have been included as Attachment Four. And city council endorsed the approval in February of 2007 with the removal of one of the conditions. And the conditions and mitigation measures as endorsed by council are included as Attachment Five in your packet. For background, the approved map was originally set to expire in February of 2009. But the Great Recession hit, and the state legislature enacted a number of subdivision map extensions, resulting in a new expiration date of February 2016. And since 2016, the city has issued two statutory exemptions, the most recent of which was approved in 2021 for a one-year extension that's set to expire February 20th of this year. And there's no other exemptions that the project qualifies for. So a development agreement is proposed to extend the life of the approved subdivision map another 10 years. The development agreement is included as Attachment Two in your agenda packet. And the proposed agreement would give the applicant a vested right to develop the project for a period of 10 years. It requires development to be undertaken consistent with the original conditions of approval, sequoia mitigation measures, as well as the general plan, zoning code, and Humboldt Low-Impact Development Stormwater Manual. It also includes a five-year benchmark, requiring four of the original conditions of approval to be completed within five years of approval of the agreement, including an engineered grading and drainage plan, an engineered improvements plan, including at a minimum plans for sidewalks, curbs, pavements, signs, water, sewer, drainage improvements, and ADA requirements, a phasing plan map, and a subdivision improvements agreement. These four documents must be reviewed and approved by the city engineer. So development agreements are adopted by ordinance. First, the planning commission makes a recommendation to the city council whether to approve or deny the proposed development agreement. Then the city council adopts the ordinance with introduction at a public hearing. And the ordinance then goes into effect 30 days after its passage. And then both the city and landowners sign the agreement, and the agreement gets recorded. So with development agreements, the standard of review is consistency with the city's general plan, including the housing element. And the city's housing element is intended to address the city's regional housing needs allocation, or RENA, to construct 952 new residential units during the housing element planning period of 2019 through 2027. The development agreement will facilitate the creation of 56 lots zoned for residential development on one of the last large undeveloped areas of the city, ultimately aiding the city to meet its RENA goal. To put this in context, between the years of 2010 and 2018, there is an average of 14 units created each year with a net total of 124 units during that time period. So a 56-unit subdivision is a relatively large development for the city and would significantly impact the housing supply. Housing Element Goal H2 calls for the city government to actively facilitate the creation of a range of new affordable and market-rate housing units to accommodate future growth. As discussed in the agenda summary, staff believes development agreement furthers this and other housing element goals and is otherwise consistent with the 2040 general plan. So the item was considered by the planning commission at a notice public hearing on December 12th. And before that hearing, the city received five emails in opposition, and two of the people who emailed also spoke at the hearing. And the emails have been included as Attachment Nine in your agenda packet. One primary concern raised was the lack of walkability of Lumber Hills in terms of the lack of proximity to goods and services. Although Lumber Hills is at the southern edge of the city, it is within city limits and relatively close to goods and services as compared to housing development elsewhere in rural Humboldt County. As described in the agenda summary, staff believes the project is consistent with the city's current general plan policies, including policy language calling for the development of vacant lands within city limits prior to annexation. Another primary concern raised by the public and discussed at length by commissioners is the adequacy of the original sequoia document and whether additional environmental review is needed at this time. As discussed in the agenda summary, the proposed development agreement allows the project to proceed as originally approved without any project changes warranting additional environmental review. Another topic of discussion at the meeting was section 2.6 of the development agreement, which prevents landowners from any newer increased development impact fees after the effective date of the agreement for a period of 10 years. This is a provision the landowner's agent continues to request as part of the agreement. There was also discussion about the park that was dedicated for the approval, during the approval of Lumber Hills Southwood Unit Number Four in the early 1990s. When the city approved this subject, Unit Six subdivision in 2007, it was found the existing park was adequate to serve the anticipated new development. The city currently has jurisdiction over the park, and the park is included in the city's park brochure. And there's an aerial image of it. So the planning commission ultimately voted to recommend city council approve the development agreement, subject to two additional conditions of approval. The first one, the first recommendation is for council to require pre-construction surveys for nesting birds, sensitive plant species, and non-aquatic amphibians prior to starting work, with findings to be sent to referral agencies as appropriate. And staff referred the project to the relevant resource agencies, both in 2021 during the last extension request and approximately one month ago for this development agreement, and did not receive any requests for surveys. As a result, staff continues to believe the existing environmental review is adequate and additional surveys are not necessary. The second recommendation is for council to require coordination with the Community Services Department to explore naming and adding signage at the Lumber Hills Park to better encourage the larger Eureka community to utilize the park. This condition has not been incorporated into the development agreement by staff, but staff is neutral on the recommendation. So based on the analysis in the agenda summary, staff recommends you hold a public hearing and introduce bill number 1024. And I have a suggested motion when you're ready. And the applicant and his attorney are here to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Castellano?
Sure, I'll get it started. Let's see. I was just kind of curious why the development hasn't taken place in the time that was allotted. Is there any information about that?
I think that's more of a question for the property owner.
Would you like to answer that question?
Good evening. I'm Bill Barnum. Want to take a minute and just mention that my father, Bob Barnum, passed away on December 26th. This project has been his since he was 37 years old. He died at 95 in a month. This project is intended to be an investment for the Lumblade and the Barnum families. And making a decision to invest millions of dollars in infrastructure has to be weighed against the chance for a return on that investment. And so the two families are close and in consultation over decades. We're concerned about the absorption rate. So we have a map with 56 lots. Historically, we have about 220 homes up there. The absorption rate is under four lots a year. And so the families have to get together, make the investment. This particular project in today's dollars would be in excess of $4 million. So you have to look at, well, what do I get by making that investment and taking the economic risk? We're just looking right down the jaws of another recession, so it's scary right now. We'd like to get some advantage with all the good things we see in the near future, offshore wind, Cal Poly, the Nordic Fish Farm. It's a lot of positive things in the near future. But we have to be able to do better investing in this than getting a T bill. So it just comes down to that. We're all getting older, and some of us aren't around anymore for this. So it really is just a cooperative venture. My dad and Fred Lumblade Senior purchased 320 acres from Campton Road to the Elks Lodge in 1955 for $75,000. It's crazy. One time, the Lumber Hills site was going to be College of the Redwoods, but other folks in town said they liked Beatrice better. So Fred Senior and my dad gave the city the golf course in 1959 and '60. They extended F Street at their expense. They built the Pro Shop at their expense and gifted it to the city. And my father was working with Miles recently with replanting. And my father was working with Miles recently with replanting the golf course because the trees that he physically planted himself were dying. So this is just a partnership between the city and the two families. We would have liked to have seen it built too, but we just didn't see. Look back the last 15 years, was that a market that you really wanted to invest in? Looking forward 10 years, we hope we can. I hope that answers it. In a typical Bill Barnum long-winded way.
And I'm sorry for the loss of your father.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, let's see, I had a question. Let me flip the page here. Okay, that's that question. Um, specifically on section 2.6 about development fees. I'm just gonna go straight to it. Uh, you know, and it relates to, you know, some of the comments we've gotten about impact to to transportation and things like that. There there is a clause in this agreement that um, there will be no development fees um moving forward with this project. You know, the economic market, the impact of development has certainly changed over the last 10 years. Um, I'm just curious if there is that a normal um clause within development agreements? Was that unique to this agreement um years ago?
I I'll speak to that. I think this is a a typical clause. Uh, it's not out of the norm to have, uh, you know, something like this that would be, you know, absolutely seen as a benefit to the to the current owner and potential future owners. Um, I will just mention that uh for this owner and future owners, this is time limited. It is just the 10 years, so it's not going to go out into the forever future. Right, this is a a 10-year agreement where as part of the investment in trying to build some housing out there, we think it's reasonable. At least staff thought it was reasonable to uh to include this in this agreement, although council's always welcome to disagree.
And I will clarify, it's not that there's no fees. It's it just sets it at the current standard fees as opposed to any new fees wouldn't would not be applicable.
Thank you. And then kind of last question. Uh, and it's part of the resolution, one of the added docs, A1 dash one. The Resolution 2007 dash oh one. Where it says that the part nine uh where it states the um, assuming 229 lots within the Lumber Hills subdivision, this equates to 2,192 trip ends per day. Um, where the design standard for average daily volume for Lumblade Drive is 12,000 vehicles. I know that's kind of referring to just like the impact of vehicles, but is that um could you explain a little bit more about that number?
Sure, yeah, so um, they used the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual to um, which has all these estimates of of trip generation for different types of uses to estimate that the vehicle trips generated um by these houses um for each home would be 9.57 vehicle trips um per day, I'm guessing. And then um, they then estimated that the whole thing, including the previous all of the neighborhood together would potentially generate 2,192 trips per day. That's very conservative. That's typical of the Trip Generation Manual. It's very conservative about how much, or it often overestimates how many trips people actually would take a day.
Got you. I was wondering, I was like, wow, is this a big, I mean, they're they're estimating like a little over nine trips per house out and and, you know, assume, okay, great, thanks.
Councilmember Bauer?
I I had a similar question about the development fees in the development agreement. And more specific is the sewer tie-in. So are we talking about laterals essentially? We wouldn't, can you explain that a bit for me?
So yeah, it's a it's a impact fee whenever there's a new hookup.
Yep.
There's a certain fee that's associated with those new hookups. And so this would lock in the current rate with what you guys just approved recently. There was an increase in that sewer impact fee and it would lock that in for 10 for 10 years. We wouldn't have another look at rates uh until another five years from now. So at that point in time, if there was an increase, which according to our public works staff, they don't see that happening. But if there was an increase, they would not be um, they would still go on this 2023 rate as opposed to the 2028, I guess it would be, if it was to increase.
And if there was an increase, I mean, what would it be, 5%? 10%? I'm just trying, I I can see what people are thinking, like, you know, we're subsidizing. I know we we need housing, but you know, that somebody's getting a sweetheart deal, so I'm just trying to flush that out.
Based on my discussions with the Public Works Director Gerbing, um, he doesn't see any rate increase in five years from now, based on the previous two that we've had as councils where we've had some significant increases, especially on the sewer side, um, the previous rate review as well as this one.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, councilmember Fernandez?
So so there was a slide there that said that this does comport with the general plan. Gave a few different tiers for affordability. And so how does this comport with the general plan then?
Oh, your mic's not on.
Sorry. Yeah, so there was a slide, I'll get used to this. Uh, there was a slide that that shows that this comports with the general plan to the effect that there were different tiers of uh of affordability. And so how does this then comport with the general plan? These 56 lots?
Yeah, let me bring that up. So with our RENA, um, the total is 952 units created between 2019 and 2027, but there's also sub sub-goals for different affordability levels. Um, so I am guessing that the single-family homes developed here will be above moderate. Um, and we have a sub-goal of 402 new above moderate housing units in the city. Um, accessory dwelling units would also be allowed here and could potentially be moderate. I I don't, I don't know if, I mean, depending on their size. Uh, you know, it's under 500 square feet. In Eureka, uh, could potentially be affordable.
So what she's saying is so while there's 56 lots that are there, that would definitely qualify as above moderate. Based on our new zoning code and the stuff that the state's doing, each one of those lots, based on the size of these lots, could all have an ADU. And that ADU would probably qualify under the moderate looking. So technically, completely built out, it could be even more than this, but it could be up to 112 units that would count towards our RENA, correct, Kristen?
Yeah, and and technically more now under SB9, but yeah.
And then with, and and I understand that this started in 2007, the the extension started in 2009. And so that's, this is going on 14 years of extensions now with another 10 planned on this. So and and I really hate to reemphasize, but I know it's already been asked, what is there? Or what what is the likelihood of something actually being built on any of these 56?
So I I think that the same reasoning that the property owner, um, Mr. Barnum said is still applicable. However, this is the last bite at the apple. Um, this will not have an opportunity, this, correct me if I'm wrong, is is the last extension out there. And um, if this does not happen, it would be a whole new renegotiation and understanding for a whole new disposition and development agreement after that 10 years. And I think that based on the agreement now, I think it should provide incentives for them to try and avoid to have to go through a whole new DDA 10 years from now.
And
And there's those requirements within the five years that need to be met. If those requirements within the five years are not met, then it also shuts down. And this would no longer, they'd have to start all over again.
Okay, so that answers that. Thank you for getting to that before I could. Uh, my last bit is about SEQA. So we've, uh, they've agreed to two additional conditions that have been recommended for uh pre-construction surveys for birds, plants, uh amphibians. And so how does this differ from from what's being requested by those from the community?
Uh, just to provide a point of clarification, the planning commission, uh, their role in the process was to uh recommend to the city council, um, but they didn't take, like, they don't take an action on the agreement. They just give a recommendation to you. And they recommended those surveys. Um, and staff uh didn't agree with that recommendation and it's not currently in the development agreement. So if um, if council wanted to add that though, that could be something that could be added. And I, we discussed it uh internally and we don't feel like it necessarily affects SEQA because at the point that those surveys would be required, SEQA would be done. Um, the discretionary review process would be over. And so um, you know, if they discovered something, it wouldn't re-trigger SEQA. It, but it could potentially trigger other laws um that other agencies have control over. And then um, they might need additional authorization from other agencies. Um, Autumn, I'm sorry. Uh, Attorney Luna, did you want to add to that?
I think I want to give uh councilmember Fernandez just an opportunity to maybe clarify his question. Are you generally concerned with SEQA or do you have a more specific question? I know there's been some some emails from concerned citizens about the SEQA review process. And I can assure you that the city attorney's office has looked at that and is very confident that you, as a council, can move forward today uh without further SEQA review, so.
Right, I understand we're under no obligation. It's just, so this was recommended then by uh the planning board and and staff had said, probably not in our best interest as a council or for the community to add these two portions, these two additional uh recommendations. What was the cause for saying no, but thank you?
Um, so for the the surveys condition, we didn't receive any um, when we sent out referrals to the resource agencies, we didn't recer- receive any um, you know, request for additional analysis. And um, there's not been anything discovered on the site by anybody or any, there was no uh reason that planning commission gave for for needing those surveys other than um feeling like additional yeah, that they weren't satisfied with um what what was done in in 2000 and, you know, when the the um document was developed. And um it may partly be because um, there was a bit of confusion about the fact that um this lot, since that approval, um, part of that approval was the approval of a timber harvest. Conditional use permit for a timber harvest and that timber harvest um was performed uh shortly, like in 2009 or 2010. And so the site um was already um disturbed since since that approval. And I'm not sure if planning commission fully understood that.
And it's my understanding that the the second recommendation was to do with the park itself and staff didn't take a stance on that, correct?
Correct. It was just to coordinate with community services about um getting the signage at the park. And we didn't take a stance on it. We also had to get the uh staff report out for you the next day. So uh, we didn't really have enough time to.
Thank you for giving us those.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Am I, am I on? Okay. Um, I had a question about underneath where at the Article One General Provisions, Section 1.5. I just had a quick question because this is for, I, this is not for, they're not building homes, right? They're just, they want these lots developed in these and then out from there. Is that, am I understanding correctly?
That's correct. They, this is for the the subdivision of the lots. And then um, it's Mr. Barnum's intent to uh for other others to develop the lots.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure before I asked so that I that I did understand that. So Section 1.5 where it talks about assignments and assumptions, and I just wanted to go back. Something you just mentioned about there could potentially be down the line, maybe other authorizations that are needed from other agencies. We could have a wide variety. Uh, according to this, it says that all of the terms of this agreement would go to anybody um that this was sold or assigned or transferred for this agreement. And so then you, we could be, uh, that means they would also be held to this 10-year period of time, but that we would have, could potentially have a wide variety of people, right? Developers and builders that would be functioning under this agreement? Am I understanding that correctly?
Uh, this agreement lasts for 10 years. So during that 10-year period, it could be that um they they complete the subdivision, record the map and sell off lots and people start developing them. And those other landowners uh would uh then be the uh, you know, successors in interest to this development agreement. But like that um 2.6 that we were talking about earlier, it ends after 10 years. So if you came in to develop a lot after 10 years, you wouldn't benefit from that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here from the public who'd like to comment? Is there anybody on Zoom? A Christensen?
Right, so I know you guys kind of, kind of touched on the concerns about the walkability. Um, I've looked this up and just being within the city limits was was kind of the answer to that. Um, it is not walkable at all. Um, between the Elks Lodge and Martin Slough, there's, I think, half a mile of of road with no sidewalks at all and very narrow shoulder. Um, some, you may recall back in June of 2021, um, a woman who had been hit by a car there on Fairway Drive was found dead, um Stacy Lynn French. Um, you know, so it's not safe, it's not walkable as it is right now. Uh, the closest business, it is a half mile to a Patriot Gas Station. Next from that, it's a mile and a half to the Handy Market. Um, and again, a good portion of that is on a curvy road that's shaded and does not have sidewalks. Um, so I don't think the question of walkability and transit access has been really addressed. So yeah.
Thanks, Althea. Do you see anyone else?
I do not.
Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for comments and a motion. Councilmember Castellano?
Awkward silence. Um, okay, so um, I I think it's been pretty clear uh from my previous time on council that I'm very pro-housing. And, you know, from my many conversations in the community, I know that we need a wide range of housing. And I acknowledge that this is part of our housing. You know, in a way, we've already acknowledged it as a council that, you know, we're planning for housing in in this area. My biggest concern is that, you know, something that um, and I did just a little bit of research, probably not enough, you know, on on this prior to this meeting is you know, the, there may be, we may be looking at, or there could be the opportunity for traffic impact fees in the future. Um, specifically fees associated with added impacts to traffic that in my ideal world would go towards, you know, providing more transit or at least exploring, you know, possibly some things like micro-transit and things like that. So um, you know, I would support this. Um, you know, you, you know, still hearing the concerns of people in the community um with the adding to that section. I marked it, uh, 2.6, the development fees section. Um, you know, uh, no fees other than pending traffic, you know, pending traffic impact fees or um, you know, no fees. pending traffic impact fees or, you know, no fees except for traffic impact fees as developed, you know, by the city of Eureka, you know, or or appropriate party. Appropriate, you know, I know there have been in the past, right? There's a big, long-time project of, you know, the county and the city looking at developing collaboration around traffic impact fees together. So I just think I want to leave that open as a possible future for this. I think especially with, you know, above moderate rate housing, I think that the developments themselves can support those fees. You know, I think that really it will be very minimal, you know, in terms of the overall scope of the development. And and I do support the coordination to name and add signage for the park as well. I do think that, you know, public parks are public parks. It'd be great if, I didn't even know there was a park there until this came before council. So I think it'd be great if other people knew that, too.
Councilmember Castellan, if I may, first of all, is that a potential motion? If so, I can help you like make sure it's clear for the record as well.
Yeah, okay, I'll I'll make that as a motion.
I think that under 2.6, if we just put in the very beginning, except for traffic impact fees, landowners shall not have an obligation to pay, et cetera, et cetera. I think your intention is clear and I think with just that addition.
Right, I don't need to go into detail about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, fair enough.
I think that we could, I think we could make that on the fly here. And then are you also adding in the Planning Commission's recommendation about the park sign?
Yes.
As part of your motion?
Yep.
Okay.
I could read it as a motion. I'll give it my best shot. I make a motion to waive full reading read by title only in introduced bill number 1024-CS and ordinance, and I have a previous, am I messing this up because I have a previous agenda pack? Okay, great. An ordinance of the city of Eureka adopting a development agreement for Lombard Hills, Southwood Unit Number 6, APN 301-301-039, with the coordination with community services to name and add signage for a park and adding in the considered or traffic impact fees to the development fees clause in Section 2.6.
I'll second that.
Any further comments? Okay, please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries. Councilmember Moulton absent.
Thank you. E2, 2022-2023 Fee Schedule Update. Director Millar?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight's second public hearing is related to the 2223 fee schedule. This is just the process of updating our fees. There's no presentation tonight. There's just the attachment to the agenda summary that lists out all the changes. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them with the assistance of Community Services and Public Works.
Great. Do we have any questions for Director Millar? Councilmember Bauer?
It's probably a question for either Miles or Director Millar. And the finance for, maybe I just the way I read things, but it says change of a three-quarter inch water meter at owner's request. The fee is 315 to change from what to what? I mean, I'm trying to, I just don't understand it when the way I read it.
So that's a new fee. Those were not in the fee schedule before. So how it's displayed is just showing that, you know, there was nothing there before. So it's essentially a new fee that will be added to the list of fees within the water section of the fee schedule.
Okay, I think that makes sense. Thanks.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone here that came to comment on this item? Anybody on Zoom? Oh, it's a public hearing. I'm here to open this public hearing. Thank you. Is there anyone here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for comments or a motion. Councilmember Bauer?
I'll make the motion to adopt the attached resolution of the City Council of the City of Eureka establishing various fees and service charges within the city of Eureka.
Second.
So it's been motion and second. Any comments? Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, Councilmember Moulton absent, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the consent calendar. Notice that public, all matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22. If a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless this unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. And I don't believe anybody wants anything pulled. No? Okay. So with that, can we get a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second. Moved and seconded, please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, Councilmember Moulton absent, motion carries.
Okay, legislative action correspondence. So anybody that has anything that they need to bring forward there? Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, this is a one that's just I recently saw, Senate Bill 58. And it is basically the decriminalization of certain hallucinogenic substances, i.e. psilocybin, DMT, mescaline, to name a few. And it's kind of one of those things where I feel like it's important to to consider this, to to support it. And I I say that thinking about the vets out there in our community. It's, there's a million studies that show that the use of these substances in a controlled setting helps people PTSD, not just vets, but terminally terminally ill cancer patients. It it's just one of those things that I think we have to get over the stigmatism of these substances, that they are useful, that they're in a medical setting. They're used quite a bit now. Other states have already done this, other cities, Oakland, Santa Cruz. I think it's an important thing for us to to support. And maybe we don't all agree with, you know, the overall bill. I think it decriminalizes personal use, a lot of different things. But and and we can even entertain, you know, we support it in a controlled setting. I'm up for anything. But I think it's important to help people that other things aren't helping them. You know, other treatments, the, and I think about a colleague of mine who committed suicide, you know, and he was on a on a prescription medication. And I think he saw no other way out. And I've heard about this before, that it it can help people, you know, rewire their brains, you know, and and get give them another another opportunity at a different life. So I'd like to see us support this this Senate bill. And I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Councilmember Bauer, if I may, do you know where this bill is in committee and whether or not we could just bring this back next time as an agendized item so we can give it its full due?
Yeah, we we can. I mean, it's not even January, so February, new bills, you know, all that. It was, it almost passed last year. It got to the Assembly Finance Committee, didn't survive, but passed the Senate. So it has a really strong chance of of passing the legislature. I don't know what the governor will do, but we can certainly bring it back and and go into further discussion.
Yeah, I think this is a, it's a topic that's probably going to garner quite a bit of discussion or may garner quite a bit of discussion. So, you know, maybe we treat it as a three thumbs up to bring it back next time as an agendized, if that's okay with everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further legislative action? Okay, moving on to ordinances and resolutions. So if we have Director Allen here, or Project Manager Allen here for the First Slough Fish Passage and Habitat Connectivity Project Presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers and staff. I'm Kelly Allen and this is Andrea from GHD. And we're here to give you some more information on our First Slough Passage project we are working on. The First Slough watershed extends from the Humboldt Bay near the Eureka Slough Bridge, under Myrtle Ave, near Cooper Gulch Park, and all the way upstream to Eureka High School campus. Historically, the First Slough watershed was an andronomous and utilized by salmonites. Salmonite, salmonids, excuse me, that one gets me. Under roadway, urban roadways in the city have now blocked these andronomous fish passages in the First Slough. So to restore fish passage to First Slough, culverts must be replaced. And this habitat will be improved and will benefit the salmonids in the watershed. The city of Eureka received a grant from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife's Fishery Restoration Grant Program to fund the design environmental compliance. The city applied for this CDFW twice and our third application was finally accepted. The city is the CEQA lead for the agency for the project. We have two consultants, GHD and Mike Levin Associates. They're completing the design and environmental compliance, which we are on track to finish at the end of March of 2023 this year. The project is located in Eureka and predominantly in our public right-of-way. There are four key areas. Cooper Gulch Habitat Area, we're going to improve. This 14th Street Crossing here has a culvert that's clogged. And then N Street and M Street crossings have barriers as well. And Andrea is going to go into more detail on the technical for you.
Sure. So this project has a number of goals and objectives that have been designed to support the restoration objectives for the project. By removing these barriers, we will be creating an additional one mile of andronomous habitat within the city of Eureka, which is targeting non-natal Coho salmon and other andronomous species that are really imperiled and state and federally listed endangered species. We're going to be restoring spawning and rearing habitat quality throughout the urban watershed, enhancing habitat connectivity and availability for these species and focusing especially in the downstream reaches by Cooper Gulch Park and the skate park. There's this critical eco-tone where the brackish waters coming up from Eureka Slough through lower First Slough mix with the freshwater habitat. And that's like fish utopia for the little juvenile salmonid. So it's a really special area, it's a really limited area. And this project is going to expand that special fish utopia zone. And by improving the culverts, the size of the culvert under 14th Street and M Street, we're going to be increasing hydraulic conveyance for those areas, which will reduce flood risk to the city, both public and private property. Want to flip this slide, Kelly? Last year, we applied to NIMSS, NOAA, for their fish passage funding, for the construction funding for this project. And while we were unsuccessful for that potential funding source, we did reach out to obtain letters of support to submit with our grant. And this project enjoys enjoys a wide variety of support from state and federal legislature and agencies. We received support letters from Assembly Member Jim Wood, Senator McGuire, Congressman Jared Huffman, Senator Alex Padilla, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, former county supervisor Virginia Bass Jackson, California Trout and Cooper Gulch Common Ground, which is a local neighborhood group near the Cooper Gulch Park here in Eureka. The project's also consistent with both federal and state recovery plans for these special status species. The project required completion and of a number of technical studies that are pretty common practice for design, development and environmental compliance for these projects. We completed a wetland delineation, a cultural resources investigation, geotechnical investigations and hydraulic modeling. We've so far completed both the 30 and 65% designs for the project and will be completing the 100% design by the end of March. Permits will be submitted to Jurisdictional Resource Agency shortly, this month or next month. And we're also currently working, there's a new, it's very exciting, actually, CDFW has a statutory exemption for CEQA for projects that are exclusively for restoration projects, which really reduces the green tape for these types of projects to make it through CEQA. So we're going to be working with city staff and CDFW to complete the the statutory exemption process. It's a new process. And we're actively working with the city to seek approximately $5 million in construction funds to implement this project, since it will soon be shovel-ready. This project makes a lot of sense for the city to pursue at this time because the culvert under Myrtle Avenue was replaced in 2019. I don't know if you remember, kind of was right before COVID, there was the big detour. And it really wasn't that big of a deal because you were able to like zip around there through Cooper Gulch. But before that culvert was replaced, if you were a fish swimming up First Slough, you hit that culvert and you were just like out of luck. And that was as far as you could get. And now there is a giant culvert under Myrtle Avenue that you can walk through and a fish can definitely swim through. And so the fish really can get up into the Cooper Gulch Park at this point in time. And so now it makes sense to keep moving upward in the watershed and replacing the upstream culverts to allow them to get even farther into the urban watershed. So the first project area we'll dig into is the Cooper Gulch Reach, which is down by the skate park. And if you flip this slide, Kelly, here, this is really an exciting part of the project area because it's super visible to the public, right? It's a park. People are there every day, they're doing disc golf and they're hiking. And the project, as it's proposed, will be compatible with both current and future public access there in the park. We are essentially, let's see, little pointer. So right now, the channel just zips right here along the edge of the skate park. And what we're going to do is turn the old channel into essentially a wetland, which is happy for the planet. And there's going to be a new channel that's going to scooch over here and it's going to be longer, which is more wet at edge to make the fish even more happy. And there's going to be these off-channel habitat ponds that get dug into the Young Riparian Forest there. And the the fish will be able to rear there and and do their happy fish thing. And then they're just going to get loaded with large wood. And the large wood loading is going to continue upstream all the way along the trail there. So that's the plan there and that's really going to increase the habitat connectivity with the flood plane and improve both the quantity and quality of habitat that's available to salmonids. And I'm sure other species like the red-legged frog and amphibians and such will be happier, too. And then further upstream at 14th Street, which is a pretty major street for the city of Eureka. I live in Eureka and cruise along there. It's 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 no joke. If you, the deal, if you flip that, Kelly. So currently, there is a culvert under 14th Street that just sucks. It's like a 12-inch corrugated metal pipe that's been there for like whoever knows how long. It's not really in great shape and you definitely can't get through it if you're a fish. And so what we're going to do is put in a giant 12-foot culvert there that is fish-passable and has a natural bottom. And that will require deconstructing and reconstructing the roadway there, which, you know, is a substantial endeavor and will require a temporary detour to get that done. But once the giant culvert is under 14th Street, if you're a fish, you can keep going. And then there's a couple of other areas. Further upstream in the watershed, there's, we call this N Street and M Street, but this is really off the street and in the city's public right-of-way here, down in the in the gulch. And if you go one more slide, Kelly, on N Street, there's a little culvert out there now down in the gulch. And it's just going to get pulled out and the channel will get daylighted. There's no need to have the culvert there at this point in time. And then under M Street, this is, the city has some infrastructure down there, a pump station and that kind of thing. That's all going to stay, but there's a culvert under this giant dirt road. Some of you might have walked down there before. I know I walk there sometimes with my dog. There is a culvert and that culvert is also tiny and crummy and not happy for fish. So it will get replaced with a giant eight-foot diameter culvert that will also have a natural bottom. And the fish will be able to swim up there to the upper part of the watershed as well. And we'll be doing some adjustments. Um, and we'll be doing some adjustments with some of the existing hard infrastructure there to make sure the new culvert doesn't, um, impact any of the existing stormwater or sewage infrastructure in any kind of undesirable way. And so those are our four work areas, the Cooper Gulch Park area, 14th Street, M Street, and N Street. And once, um, we get our implementation funding and we're off and running, uh, First Slough and urban Eureka will be that much happier for fish.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Castellano?
Firstly, I'm really excited about this. But are there plans for signage or any kind of educational materials that will help people kind of recognize the ecosystem work that's being done through this project?
I know that the community services staff have been proposing to do a number of public access improvements there at Cooper Gulch. And so hopefully, as that project moves forward, they'll be able to incorporate the public education component of it. And, and it also kind of depends on which funding source we're ultimately able to tap for the construction dollars and what their requirements are. But definitely makes sense there because it's so publicly accessible to be able to promote the restoration actions.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. Thank you. This is an impressive presentation. Uh, I do have questions about the, uh, the outreach to local agencies and stakeholders. So it says here that we're coordinating with tribal officials. I'm curious how that's going. And then of course, uh, it says that we've invited Cooper Gulch Neighborhood Group to attend. Do we have anyone here tonight?
Um, I emailed them and they didn't receive any of Cooper Gulch going to be coming, but they knew that we're having the meeting. Um, and as for the tribals, yes, we have received responses from the Wiat tribe and Blue Lake, and they didn't have any additional comments to add to the report that was already provided by Roscoe and Associates. Um, we did a follow-up email to Bear River, um, waiting to see if they will respond or not. But we've given them 60 days at this point to respond and haven't heard.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else? Thank you. That was really interesting. I appreciate you bringing that forward. It's going to be awesome. Do I need to take public comment on this? Oh, is there anybody here from the public who'd like to comment on this?
Is this on? Yeah. Oh, yeah. Uh, I'm Joan Carpenter. I live at L Street near 14th and, uh, I'm quite familiar with the, the M and N area there. And I wanted to lend my support to this project just because it's, um, a really great natural area. It has lots of wonderful, underappreciated natural resource values there. Based on some study I did of watersheds in Humboldt Bay, it's also probably prime habitat, not only for the fish, but for the lamprey, which were a traditional, important traditional food source. So, um, might want to add that to the plus side of the project because, um, lampreys are overlooked. But, um, I also wanted to, um, recommend that the city take on a more holistic management plan of the watershed, especially since these, uh, resources are being invested in because, um, ongoing, um, we've had a lot of help from the Public Works Department and the Police Department managing the area, but there isn't a strong management plan for the upper watershed from the utility corridor at M. There's a pump station there going up towards the high school. Uh, there is, uh, drug camps in there and they're quite a nuisance. They come and go. Um, they're on both sides of that corridor. Um, the worst part of that is that they bring in a lot of hazardous waste that gets left on the ground and then becomes part of the runoff. In that area is very wet and these folks camp in the dryery months. And like this week, there was a big vacate, but I'm quite sure if I go down there with my trash bag, I will find batteries, fuel containers, um, biological, or I guess you call it medical waste. I have personally collected lots of that. And, um, the other more important thing to me even of the environment out there is the, there is a large traffic of students from the high school that come through that M Street corridor. They go to your new, our new safety crossing at 14th and M. There's a lovely signal there. But, um, the traffic of the school is right on top of the traffic of the drugs. And I think that more attention should be paid to that. But I do support the project.
Thank you, Jim. Is there anybody else from the public who'd like to comment on this item? No. A Christensen?
Uh, yeah, sounds awesome. Good job, everybody.
Thank you, Althea. So I'll bring it back to council. This is just a report, isn't it? So we won't be, no action. Great. Thank you so much for being here. Oh, Councilmember Castellano.
Yeah, just to reiterate, I'm, I'm very excited about this. I also want to thank Director Girving for, you know, really thinking ahead with, um, when we did have that big issue on Myrtle and, and that we were able to restore the habit there because this wouldn't be possible if that hadn't been done. So it's really great to see kind of these, these things moving forward. Also, I'm excited about slues. And I just think that maybe need to have something like slue days or something, you know, there's so many, maybe that's not the best, anyway, just something to think about. There's so many, there's so many slues in Eureka and there's so many, you know, restoration efforts happening, um, kind of all along them and to really, um, get the community more aware of them and really kind of celebrating that connection and connectivity, um, between watersheds and community would be just something fun to think about for the future.
Just along the lines of the interpretive sign. Typically, all of the funding that we give for these restoration projects do require, depending on the funding sources, um, the presenter said, but typically they require some sort of interpretive signage. Even if they didn't, we would definitely go out for an ancillary grant to get interpretive signage, um, to go along with the project for sure.
Well, thank you, everyone. Participatory budgeting fiscal year 2022, 23, City Manager Slattery.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this participatory budgeting program was approved by council at the last, um, budget period for fiscal year 22, 2022, 23. Council approved $75,000 to go towards a participatory budgeting program. Councilmember Castellano and former Councilmember Arroyo were assigned to work with staff and a facilitator, um, Jelena James Consulting, on developing the program. So we started back in, I'd say, August or so, late August. Um, this was the first time, uh, process for staff and for council. And so we developed a, a program. The initial design of the program was to have, um, each council member recruit, um, community members within their district. Um, the idea was to get 10 community members from each of the districts, um, have each of those districts participate in their own budget process where $15,000 would be allocated to each one of the districts. And then, um, they would be prioritized and we'd go out and either implement a program or implement a project that benefited that district. So we, that's how the program was initially developed. We developed interest forms, um, solicited community members on social media and then press releases to try and get participation. Turns out that once, um, the solicitation period was over, we got 24 community members. And there was a disparity amongst the districts as to how many community members were in each district. And so there was a decision made at that time to combine everybody into one and, um, go through the process that way. We established three different meetings. The first meeting was to describe the program, what the, um, goals, missions, and visions and values for the city are and, um, what type of categories can be prioritized and what areas of concern were developed. Second, second meeting was more to kind of whittle down what areas of concerns are. And then the final meeting was a meeting of all of the community members that participated as well as the public to go and rank, um, some of those, um, projects and programs that were developed. So in the second meeting, um, the community members that participated, um, the two areas of concern that were prioritized were, um, basically housing and, um, traffic safety. And so after that second meeting, staff went back and developed projects and programs that were, um, um, kind of addressed those areas of concern. And so we developed basically 16 projects, um, from the, from the housing component. Um, some of the options were a tiny home authorized encampment workshop. Another one was an accessory dwelling unit workshop. And then there was a rental assistance program and a utility assistance program that were options. Um, on the traffic safety side, um, the two areas that were proposed for projects were, um, intersection murals as a traffic calming, um, measure. And then the other was rapid flashing beacons that could go at crosswalks. And so at the third meeting, we presented these options. There were the, the, the four, um, uh, programs that addressed, uh, housing. And then we developed six areas that were, um, specific locations for, um, intersection mural art. And then there were six locations for rapid flashing beacons. Um, we put all the options up, described the process to the public. I'd say we had 40, I don't remember the numbers, but 40 to 50 people participated in the, in the final meeting. We gave everybody a certain budget and number of sticky notes to go to all the 16 different projects and prioritize which ones were there. And we determined that, um, there were five projects, um, that were prioritized that fit within the budget. The top vote getter was the rental assistance program, which is basically a, uh, an income qualifying program where folks that, um, earn 80% of the median, median income or less will be eligible for up to $500 for rental assistance. We allocated $30,000 of the $75,000 towards that program. Um, the second vote getter was the utility assistance program. We allocated $15,000 to that. Oh, and at the rental assistance program, it's, it's a maximum of $500, um, for the rental assistance per, per household. Um, and that also qualifies for mortgage, um, if you own your house and your, your income qualify. Um, the other is utility assistance program. It's allocated $15,000 total. Each, um, resident can get up to $250. We've had experience with COVID with this utility assistance program and it, for some reason, didn't get a lot of participat- participation. And so we put in there if that, if this money is not exhausted, that we would roll that money over into the rental assistance program. The third top, third top vote getter was the tiny home authorized encampment workshop, which is allocated $10,000. And that'll be something that the staff will work with a facilitator and get our relevant, um, planning and, um, building staff to discuss with the public how that process could come to fruition and what that process would look like. The next top vote getter was a, and RRFBs are repeating rapid flashing beacons. I did pretty good, huh, Brian? That's a hard one. Anyway, that one is at California and Wabash. If that turns out they're going to do a, a study on that, and if it turns out that that would be better to have a stop sign there, that's obviously safer, we'd install the stop sign and then relocate that location to Boone and Jay, which was the next highest priority, um, based on the group. And then the final vote getter was an intersection mural at, uh, X and West 4th Street, 14th Street, excuse me. And we've reached out to, uh, Project Manager Asbury to talk with local artists and narrow down what that artist would, um, where they're going to be, what, what it's going to look like and what's going to be put out there. So as far as the timeline for all of these, we will definitely have the utility and rental assistance programs up before the end of the month. So that'll be available by February. Um, the tiny home authorized workshop conservatively will be done in May, likely a little bit earlier than that. And then the, um, rapid flashing beaking, um, will be installed in March. And the intersection mural will take a little bit longer because of getting the artists on board and making sure that we have the right material so that it, it lasts a long time. So that'll happen in June. So with that, uh, staff is asking that council approve the allocation of the $75,000 for the five projects that were, um, um, selected by the participatory budgeting process. If there's any questions, I'm available to answer.
Questions?
Oh, I did want to mention another thing. We did learn a lot through this process. If this happens to go through as our next strategic visioning and this becomes a priority for council again, we'll definitely, we took notes and have an understanding of some of the areas where we could have improved. Obviously, more participation is what we'd like to get out of this for sure. And so we'd probably spend more time trying to get more participation. But there is also procedural things that we learned about and should make it a little bit more effective, uh, next time. If council approves it.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll open up public comment. Is there anyone here from the cub, from the public who'd like to comment on this topic? Anybody on Zoom?
A Christensen?
Uh, yeah, it was definitely a learning experience. Um, yeah, we, we could have done a lot better with organization in the first portions of it. It got kind of, uh, wild and confusing. Um, outreach, I know some of the other participants and I were all like, hey, next time, you know, we're happy to go knock on doors in our neighborhoods and get, uh, get more people involved. I do think there are, or there were ideas that we could have weeded out initially as not being within the city's, um, jurisdiction. Um, I think that could have kind of cleared things a little bit. Um, I just want to thank everybody who appreciated. You know, we had people who showed up at the public meeting at the Warfinger who had been unaware of it until that day, but they came and they voted and that was absolutely fantastic. So, um, so good for them.
Thank you, Althea. No one else? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for comments or a motion. Councilmember Fernandez?
I'm thrilled that we did something like this and it's been successful. I, I know that there's, uh, growing pains that come with these type of projects. I see you nodding your head.
That wasn't, I didn't mean to say that enthusiastically, but as Althea mentioned, there was, um, it was the first time we'd done it. It was new to everybody and we wanted to make it unique to Eureka and so we still need to work on that.
Well, we're a unique city up here on the coast too. So it's great to see that this was successful even moving forward. And if nobody else, I'd love to make the motion for this. So, uh, move to direct staff to implement the projects and programs prioritized through the 2022, 2023 participatory budgeting process.
I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Oh, I just wanted to say.
Oh, let's have a comment.
Wanted to appreciate staff, but, but especially members of the public who participated. I do, uh, hope that, um, those same members of the public come to our strategic visioning. And I think it would be great, if possible, to bring that, you know, kind of cachet of ideas to the strategic visioning, um, just to kind of share all the different ideas that, that people had, um, as part of the early stages of brainstorming, though clearly we couldn't implement all of them. There were some really, you know, thoughtful, um, heartfelt consideration of what would, what things might, you know, help our city. So it was great to be part of it.
Thank you.
No, it was great, although I didn't get to say anything at that last meeting. Um, it was great to see all the public there and I hope next time, if, if we do it next time, that we have a lot more participation because I think, um, you know, the people that went, that were there, um, felt like they had, you know, had some positive change in the city. So it was great and look forward to maybe seeing again.
Anything that supports community participation, 100%. Okay, please vote unless there's any other comments. Great.
Unanimous vote, Councilmember Molten absent. Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Great. Principal Planner Kenyon, Coastal Land Use Plan Review Session Four.
Hello again, council. This is our fourth review session on the comprehensive update of the coastal land use plan. We're proposing to comprehensively update our land use plan, and the new plan would have these six chapters. And we started bringing drafts of the chapters to city council in October with the intro, public access, and land and aquatic resources chapter in November. Now we're hitting on land uses, and we've been bringing the relevant portions of the glossary each time. So the last review session of the initial draft will be the next January meeting of council. And so today, we're talking about the land use and development chapter. To recap, the land use plan, when it's comprehensively updated, it'll become the new coastal element of the 2040 general plan. And it, along with our implementation plan, which is also known as the coastal zoning code, they comprise our local coastal program under the California Coastal Act. And once the updates are certified by the coastal commission as being consistent with the coastal act, they will become the standard of review for coastal development permits in the city's coastal zone jurisdiction. And some things to keep in mind when reviewing the policies is that the policies in the coastal element will only apply in the coastal zone. So if there's a policy that council would like to add to apply more generally, it should go in a different section of the 2040 general plan. Also, the policies in this coastal element really should be focused on types of policies that are relevant for coastal development permits. The coastal element will only apply when you're dealing with a coastal development permit, but for everything else in the coastal zone, the whole general plan will apply. So for instance, you know, there's policies in the general plan now talking about art in Old Town. I wouldn't recommend adding those to the coastal element, because art isn't something that needs a coastal development permit, and we wouldn't want people, like, appealing a project to the coastal commission based on something about art, because we really wouldn't want them to be involved in that topic. So also, these are general plan policies, so they should be broad, and we leave the details to this coastal zoning code. And they have to conform with the coastal act, and that limits our discretion in certain ways. The LUP by definition must indicate the kinds, locations, and intensity of land uses in the coastal zone. So that's why our land use map and land use designations need to be in the coastal element. And also pursuant to the coastal act, land use decisions must protect coastal resources, ensure adequate services, minimize risks from hazards, and not displace current or future priority uses. And what priority uses are, are there's a bunch of policies in the coastal act supporting certain uses, giving them priority over general industrial, general, commercial, or residential development. And those priority uses are coastal dependent and related uses, agriculture, visitor-serving commercial, natural resources, and public access and recreation. So the draft chapter is organized into seven sections, and I'm just going to hit on some highlights of how the policies here are different than what's in the adopted 2040 general plan. Basically, a lot of the difference is we're attempting to have more flexibility of use than the currently certified LUP has, but we are trying to more clearly prioritize priority uses than what's in the adopted 2040 general plan to be successful in getting certification from the coastal commission. And one example of that is the Old Town Commercial Land Use Designation. This currently certified LUP, because of the coastal commission's priority on visitor-serving commercial, really restricts ground floor uses to things that cater to tourists. And the adopted 2040 general plan doesn't have any sort of visitor-serving prioritization, and we're recommending to focus the ground floor, street-facing uses on uses that contribute to a pedestrian-friendly environment, so not necessarily tourist-related. So this, this could be like grocery store or something neighborhood serving, too. So it increases the flexibility of use. And we saw this recently approved for Half Moon Bay, I think, in a recent LUP update they did. Another instance of this is coastal dependent industrial land. We're proposing to, yeah, I'm not going to go into detail to this, but we have a lot of vacant and underutilized land designated for coastal dependent industrial use in the city and in the unincorporated county. And so we're proposing to do two things to address that. One is increase flexibility of use on parcels zoned for coastal dependent industry, and also to reclassify some parcels with the least utility for CDI uses. And right now, very few things are allowed on CDI land. Principally permitted, it needs to, basically, it needs to have, what's the definition? Coast Bennett Industries Industrial, you have to need a site on the water to be able to function at all and be industrial. So that's only a commercial fishing, marine oil terminals, waterborne import, export, stuff like that. And then conditional uses are really limited to coastal-related industry. And so we're proposing to add more coastal-related industrial uses, like, for instance, right now, timber products processing surprisingly isn't a conditional use that's allowed, so we would add that. Also, we would add coastal-dependent civic, commercial, and recreational uses like coastguard facilities, marine research stations, cruise ship docks, boat equipment rental. So not necessarily industrial, but definitely coastal-dependent. And then also interim-type uses, secondary uses, that would be incidental to a primary CDI use, and second-floor offices and residences. Moving on to the CDI reclassification proposal, currently, there's 62 APNs and 115 acres of land zoned for CDI. And we're proposing to reclassify about 60% of the acreage and retaining 83 acres in CDI use. So when the coastal commission reviews our proposal, they're first going to wonder if there is an overabundance of CDI land. And there's been, the county recently did a market study in 2018 that definitely shows this, even if we get the wind energy, it accounted for that, and we still have a ton. And then the second question, are the lands most appropriate for CDI retained in the CDI land use designation? And that's the parcels that have deep water access and docks, and so that was something we took into account. And then three, they're going to want to know, are the lands to be reclassified appropriate for other coastal act priority uses? Because they would rather, you know, it be rezoned into another priority use designation rather than into general industrial. And so that's how, that's why some changes are being proposed to the adopted 2040 general plan here. In the adopted general plan, we adopted reclassification of city-owned bayfront land to public quasi-public, where we're now proposing this new bayfront recreational land use designation, which is similar to public facilities, but it's more coastal-oriented. So it speaks to their prioritization of coastal recreation, and it's what we're doing with the land anyway. So also, instead of, some, certain parcels are on the water but aren't very useful for CDI, like this example, the Simpson site, just north of the Del Nord Street Pier. The water there is actually an old log pond that's really shallow, and they don't, a different owner owns the deeper water further out from them. So it would be really hard for them to develop any sort of dock there. So instead of proposing that as general industrial, we're proposing this new kind of CDI light designation called Bayfront Industrial, which would still prioritize CDI, but it would allow light industrial uses as conditional uses. One other difference with the adopted 2040 general plan and the draft coastal element is that we're trying to address sea level rise more, to address the coastal act provision to minimize risk to hazard, hazards. So there's certain parts of the city that are vulnerable now to flooding if it wasn't for intervening barriers. So we talk about that in the community places visions. And one thing is changing some of, the 2040 general plan as adopted would re-designate some areas, let me, to general commercial that we instead propose to re-designate to this mixed-use limited designation that was created during the rezoning of the Crowley site there for the Betty Community Housing. Also, up at the highway, north of this, northeast of the city, not having the land there be general commercial anymore, but instead be this new designation that doesn't allow residential uses and is more limited because of how vulnerable that area is. And then there's also parts of the coastal zone that would be totally safe from sea level rise, even in 2100, if the highest projections occurred and we got, you know, six-plus feet of sea level rise. And so those are areas where we can definitely propose really high density, and the coastal commission wouldn't bat an eyelash. So those are areas we would support a lot of increased density. And that's it for my presentation.
Oh, council member Castellano?
Okay, I don't have to always go first, but, let's see, I think my, you know, you spoke to most of the things I had questions about, so thanks. And you mentioned wind, and I just wasn't sure, but I noticed, at least I'm pretty sure that I didn't notice that the wind or offshore wind was mentioned anywhere in the coastal dependent development. I'm just wondering if there was a reason for that, or if there was a place where you might see, I was thinking LUD, somewhere in the LUD 3 point something section, to include some mention of offshore wind or, or development supporting wind.
I thought we added a mention of wind somewhere.
I may have, I did read this really late at night.
Yeah, we added it to LUD 3.8.
Oh, my gosh.
So the purple part of that is what's already in the 2040 general plan, and then we added for both established industries and emergency, emerging industries such as offshore wind energy.
Perfect. You got it. Thanks. And then I just noticed, well, I'll give input later. Okay, that's, that's all.
Council member Bauer?
I'm totally supportive of increasing the flexibility of use. I mean, I think in CDI lands, we're never going to have the hundreds of ships that we used to see in the 1800s or early 1900s lining our docks, you know, it's just not going to happen. So I hope the coastal commission will support that, you know. I did have a question about Jacobs, what is that, East Commercial, what's it called again, Highway East?
Yeah, we're proposing to re-designate it Commercial Highway East.
So no new residential, right? I mean, obviously, we have residential there, which we'll have to consider, or somebody will have to consider 50 years from now how to protect that, because those levees are all hanging on by a, by a thread. But yeah, I just wanted to make sure. So, well, let's say something happens, though, would we allow a rebuild if, if there's some kind of catastrophe, you know, tsunami or something?
Yeah, there's a provision in the coastal act that allows for redevelopment in place exactly as it was before, in the case of an emergency where it was destroyed by disaster. We're bringing the hazard chapter next, though, and we could talk about it more.
Okay, thanks.
Seeing no more questions in this moment, do we open this to, we're going to open this to public comment. Is there anyone from the public here who'd like to comment on this item?
All right, I've got very little competition tonight. That's great. I did, looking at the library district, I've, I've been spending a lot of time over there. And I see that housing is included kind of along with office and stuff like that. The thing that I've noticed over there, especially right there at like Third and O, Third and N Street, is by 5 o'clock, it is totally empty. Everyone in those offices and in those buildings pretty much has gone home. They've left. There's no eyes on the street. Nobody's looking out the window. And I think that's a large part of the reason that that specific area has so many quality of life concerns and so many, kind of a pretty bad reputation. So I would really, really like to see like some high-density housing there, you know, maybe something that's even like three or four stories high, just so that we have people looking out their windows at 8 o'clock at night, you know, and just kind of to discourage some of the kind of criminal element type stuff that you see over there, just because after 5 o'clock, everything's deserted. I'd also like to ask if there's been any, like, contact or collaboration with the library itself about what uses to have around there. So yeah, that's all.
Thanks, Althea. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll bring it back to council for comments. Questions, comments? Council member Castellano?
It's getting awkward, yeah. Let's see, firstly, I just think this plan is so thoughtful, so thank you for that. The, your, the thought you've put into it really translates in the plan itself, so thank you. I was just thinking, and the LUD 2.1 section, letter G is just a little bit dated, because I think it's the creation of a cultural arts theater district, which it's, you know, it's been created. And then I was thinking, it could be nice to mention the Daguruluie Cultural Center, but then that's just because that's kind of a new cultural asset there. And then I just love the pedestrian serving. I think that's really an exciting shift. And to the public commenters' question, is there anything that would prevent kind of mid-level housing in the library district? I mean, I think there would still need to be some sort of pedestrian-serving ground floor, but the upstairs could be used for housing or?
In the library district, the ground floor could be residential at this point, unless we applied some sort of pedestrian-focused frontage down there, which we were debating where there's those two surface parking lots across from the Adorni Center, whether we'd want to ensure those were visitor-serving on the bottom, since that's kind of like the gateway to the, your historical tour there. But I don't know, most of it wouldn't be, so you would be allowed on the ground floor. And it has a 2.5 FAR, which means you could build the whole, a whole parcel to, you know, fully to two stories and then another half of a third story. So you can get quite a, a large development. So you can, um, get quite a, a large development there. Um, the LUP doesn't have height limits, so we'd have to, we'll look at that when we do the Coastal Zoning Code and how tall you could get there.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
And then to echo the, the last commenter there, Althea, I think it was, uh, had asked if we'd done any outreach to, to the library or any of the businesses around there. Has there been any correspondence between the city?
Yeah, we, uh, are currently working on a waterfront-specific plan, which has been really helpful with doing the LUP update at the same time, because we're getting a lot of feedback. Um, I don't know if the library attended one of our, um, special meetings on that, but we've definitely reached out to them and we can, again, um, that was a good reminder to check back in with them if we haven't heard from them.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And now we shall ask if there are any future agenda items? Great. City manager reports.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mayor, Council. Um, just was going to give another update on the, um, earthquake situation. Um, we had that smaller earthquake happen this past week. Had our chief building official out looking at, um, potential further damage. Um, didn't get much here, however, um, he did go down to Riedel. Um, if anybody has the time or effort, uh, Riedel really has been affected by this. Um, he said he saw at least 12 residential houses that were off of their foundations and a lot of damage down there. And so, um, our neighbors definitely need help down there. I do want to, once again, reiterate and thank all of our staff who participated in this. A, a great story happened, um, last Friday, our chief building official, Riley, was out, um, inspecting more of our residential properties and found one that was significantly damaged. Um, turns out that the, the person living in the home was handicapped, um, elderly. Um, the house was not safe at all, um, didn't want to put them out or anything like that. He spent the whole day finding a location for this community member to go to, drove him to Humboldt Hill, um, left him at his, um, friend's house, contacted a contractor. That contractor was there early on Saturday morning, fixed the problem and had him back in his house that afternoon, so. Um, I think that's pretty exemplary of what all of our staff have done here and so, um, I just want to thank them for that and, um, good to hear that, um, there wasn't any more damage from this previous earthquake, but other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Our staff is the best. I love team Eureka.
Especially him, I didn't expect it from him, but he did it. I hope he's watching.
We show up for each other. Love that. All right, so we shall now move to council reports. I did want to just mention one thing I forgot to mention in my report. This Saturday, January 7th, there's a couple of things going on. There's an Ivy cleanup, I think, this week, no, it's not the Ivy, it's the downtown cleanup. But the thing that I wanted to talk about was they are having a walk one step at a time to end human trafficking. And we didn't get this in time to get the, um, proclamation in, but this is a really important issue in our region and all over. Um, it's at Saturday at one o'clock, it's happening at Carson Park. So, you know, if you want to show up and just be supportive for 10 minutes or show up for the whole time, uh, we'd love to see you. So with that, we'll start with council reports and we'll start with Councilmember Costellano, since she's the beginner of the evening.
You know, with the, since our last meeting, it's been, uh, relatively quiet. Um, you know, just doing kind of typical council member things. Um, I will be traveling, not for council, um, but on, on vacation with my husband. Um, so I'll be attending the meeting virtually, um, on the 17th, so I just want to let folks know about that. And that's, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
It's been very quiet on my end, surprisingly, so, uh, I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, on, I think it was December 20th or 21st, um, my son, one of my sons and, and I helped out the Betty Chin, um, dinner. And, uh, there was a ton of EPD there, which was awesome. We, I think we served four or 500 meals or something. And, uh, it was just a great experience to go help out and, um, help Betty, who's, she's just, she's a gem. Um, felt really fortunate to call her a friend and, um, so that was a lot of fun. And then I saw EPD again, it crammed the cruiser and bought a bunch of food to support that effort. And, um, EPD had a really great showing this, this holiday season and kudos to, to, to all of them for really, um, helping out with the, helping the community, helping, um, those in need. So that was the highlight of my, you know, one of the highlights of my holiday time was, uh, getting to participate in that kind of, that kind of really good stuff. And other than that, yeah, it's been, um, it's been a holiday season and it's been an interesting one, the earthquake. You know, I talked to Cal Cities, Cal Cities actually contacted me right after the earthquake and that's our, you know, our brothers and sisters out there in, um, 400-plus cities in California and asked what they could do. And I'm like, you know, donate to Red Cross. I mean, I mean, we were fortunate in Eureka to not have, you know, a huge amount of, like our, our, our poor, um, friends in, in Riedel, but it was just nice to have that kind of, people, you know, having others reaching out and really, um, concerned about us. So that was, uh, uh, it's made the holidays interesting and I'm glad, um, our city fared so well, you know? And, and staff really did a good job of getting out there and, um, making sure we're all safe, so, you know, it was great. Um, that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
I don't really have a whole lot to report either, I've just been studying and getting caught up, so I feel like I'm up to speed and won't be dead weight, so that's what I'm doing right now.
Awesome. Well, I was reminded of a bunch of things that I did, but my mayor report's over. So we're going to close this meeting with the gavel. Thanks all for coming, we appreciate you being here and all of your input. And what's, um, Althea, thank you so much, I've appreciated you being here tonight, you've had a lot to contribute.
I, I try to keep it pleasant.
You're appreciated. And with that, happy Tuesday, we're adjourned. Boom.